Well, why don't I go ahead and call our city council meeting to order. Join me in standing for the pledge, please. All right, and then Jeff, can you please call the roll?
Yes, Councilor Petezel.
Here.
Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Hamblin.
Here.
Councilor Lee.
Here.
Councilor Exner.
Present.
Councilor Schultz is not present, and Mayor Pulliam.
Yep, here, and Councilor Schultz is excused for this evening. And well, we only have one item on our city council agenda for this evening. It's for the land use proposal for Bull Run Terrace. I will go ahead and get us started with the instructions for that. And public testimony for this hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, please click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. The speaker time limits for the hearing this evening will be 20 minutes for applicant's presentation, three minutes for each audience member testifying in favor, against, or neutral, and then we'll provide seven minutes for the applicant's rebuttal. Hearing steps, this is an open public hearing. I will call this being the order for state land use file nineteen dash oh five oh CPA ZC Sub SAP three, and the time is six oh five here on November thirtieth. I will now toggle back to see my all view. I will, okay, I'm calling for any abstentions from the hearing body. Okay, now I gotta get back to my script. Hold on, sorry, I'm all mixed around tonight. I will now call for any conflicts of interest from the hearing body. And I will now pull our hearing body for any ex parte contact. And please remind, reminder, this includes any site visits that took place.
I just want to bring up that I talked to staff a while back, and I watched the video that staff had, a video that they had put out maybe two, three months ago, I think it was. And that I was on the planning commission when this site was first originally approved back fifteen years ago, or whatever it was.
Thank you, counselor.
I also watched the video.
Okay, Councilor Exner.
I did not watch the video, but I have visited the property. And I like Counselor Petezel, probably thirty-five years ago, I visited this thing when it was being proposed first. And I have looked at it here just recently, though.
Thank you, Counselor Smallwood.
Same, just seen the video.
Okay, and did I see a hand up from you, Counselor Lee?
Yes, I did watch the video, and I attended both of the planning commission hearings.
Okay, thank you. For me, I did watch the video and scrolling down, typical social media would see the occasional posts, but nothing that I interacted with or spent a whole lot of time with. Okay, so with that, and I will call for any challenges to members of the hearing body. To bring a challenge, if you're participating online, click the raise hand button and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand and wait to be recognized. Jeff, I'll go ahead and wait and see if there's any challenges to the hearing body.
Okay, Mayor, I'll just take a look at the list of attendees. And no, I do not see any hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. And if you decide to testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, you may not be able to raise it at a later point at any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved, or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by the close of the record, or failed to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal that decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough specificity, I always mess that one up, to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. I'll now call for the staff report.
Everyone, let me just share my screen. So this site is located just southwest of Highway twenty-six, east of the existing Deer Point subdivision. It's about fifteen point nine one acres. It's currently zoned, you can see the site outlined in red. A chunk of it is R one, that's in yellow, that's low-density residential. The orange area is R two, medium-density residential, and the pink area is C three, Village Commercial. It has a comprehensive plan designation of Village, again, outlined in red there. The applicant, their request is for a zone map amendment, which is a type four procedure, a comprehensive plan amendment, which is also a type four procedure, a specific area plan, also a type four, and then subdivision and tree removal, which are both type two. Just for the purposes of this presentation, I'll be focusing on just the type four, since that is what city council is concerned with. So just a little bit of history. This was originally put in front of Planning Commission on August twenty-fourth. A resident requested a continuance, which Planning Commission granted. So the application again was presented to Planning Commission on October twenty-sixth, at which point Commission recommended approval to City Council. So the first thing that the applicant is requesting is a zone map amendment. This is the proposed zoning for the site. And I'll go through each specific zone later on in this presentation. But just to give an overview, the green area is an extension of the existing Deer Point Park, and will be zoned as parks and open space. The yellow is R one, low-density residential. The orange is R two, medium-density residential. The applicant is proposing to introduce R three, which is high-density residential. And then the pink is C three or Village Commercial. Just to give a numerical overview of what will happen to this. The R one, that's the low-density residential, will be reduced from eight point oh five acres to zero point five nine acres. The medium-density residential will be reduced from five, about five acres to one point two three acres. The introduction of high-density residential R three is six point five acres. And then C three Village Commercial is being increased from two point eight four acres to three point six one acres. The applicant is also requesting a comprehensive plan map amendment. This is required in any village, any area that's designated as village, when the maximum density changes by more than twenty percent, which, in this case, the maximum density with the introduction of the high-density residential zoning will increase by more than twenty percent. We did the analysis on the urban growth boundary land inventory to make sure that none of the proposed land would be put into a deficit. And these are the numbers that we came up with, showing that with the introduction of high-density residential, the surplus of commercial, and then reducing low- and medium-density residential, that we are not going into any deficit, that we're still in a surplus for each of those land types. Another requirement for a comprehensive plan map amendment is analysis of relevant state land use goals. So I'm just going to go through the ones that are relevant to this application, relevant to Sandy. Goal one is citizen involvement, which is met through notices and public hearings in front of Planning Commission and City Council. Goal two is land use planning, which staff has reviewed this application according to code requirements and have notified relevant state agencies like DLCD. Goal five is natural resources. One of the things that staff is recommending in the staff report is a condition to install fencing to protect all of the site's retention trees. Goal eight is recreational needs. So part of this site is being proposed to be dedicated as parkland for the future Deer Point Park. I'll talk a little bit more about this in a bit, but the future design review will be requiring that the buildings on the, that are across the street from the park in the Village Commercial area face the park. And then this proposal, this updated proposal that the applicant has provided includes a reandering walkway in the park. Goal nine is economic development, which requires, again, that surplus of buildable commercial land, and the changes allow for that surplus. Goal ten is housing, which we've determined that by providing a mix of housing types, including multifamily, that this creates options for potential residents. Goal twelve is transportation. One of the things that this plan does is connect Dubarka Road to Highway twenty-six, which is a goal in the transportation system plan. And goal thirteen is urbanization, which the proposed development does accommodate residential and commercial uses within the UGB and meets that goal. The goals that I didn't mention have to do with the Willamette River, with the coast, things that aren't relevant to Sandy. So I'm going to go through each of these zoning designations. So the area that's zoned as low-density residential is lots one through four. You'll also see there are, you can't see it very well, but track B and track C, both in yellow, are public storm ponds. So staff has determined that these, that their applicant's request meets the density requirements, which is one detached single-family home per lot. So that's for single-family homes. The medium-density residential in orange, which is lot five, allows for a maximum of fourteen units. It will be subject to a future design review application, where staff will review all of the applicable code requirements for any development that happens on that lot. Lot six is high-density residential. The density calculations allow for a maximum of a hundred and thirty units. And again, will be required, the applicant will be required to submit a design review application for staff to review to ensure that anything that's built on that site meets the city's development code. Lot seven, which is Village Commercial, the code allows for a mix of commercial and residential uses. It's, right now, unclear what kind of residential density can exist on a Village Commercial lot. But that will be determined in a future design review application. One of the things that our city's attorney determined is that the applicant is required to provide a specific area plan overlay. This is required by the comprehensive plan due to the proposed density increase. And then this, I just took directly from the code, shifting of the underlying zoning district boundaries to accommodate development constraints and land divisions for specific development proposals may be allowed through a proposal, through, sorry, through approval of a specific area plan. Specific area plans are intended to promote coordinated planning concepts and pedestrian-oriented mixed-use development. And then finally, I just wanted to talk about the park dedication. So according to the calculation of potential dwelling units, the applicant is required to dedicate one point three one acres, and they're proposing one point four two six acres. We are recommending that the design review approval for lot seven, that's the Village Commercial lot in pink, includes activated frontages facing the parkland. Activated frontages is planer ease for pedestrian-friendly, you know, nice-looking business fronts, making sure that everything is facing the park to really give that pedestrian scale feel. And then the proposal also includes a walkway through the park. I wanted to touch on a couple of potential public benefits. The revenue for this development will allow for the connection of Dubarka Road to Highway twenty-six, which again is part of the transportation system plan, and then also that extension of Deer Point Park and putting things in to that park area. We've received a total of, I believe, fifty-two public comments. Fifty are in the staff report, we've received two since the publication of the staff report. Some of the concerns that we've seen in those letters and emails are potentially the loss of trees, lowering the aesthetic quality of the area and privacy for existing homes, the capacity of the police to patrol multifamily areas, the possibility of criminal activity in multifamily areas, being previously told by realtors that the land would not develop as residential, concerns about the effects of apartment housing on property values, relevance to the comprehensive plan, and potential for what's called spot zoning. And then finally, traffic and parking concerns.
I was gonna say a few words as well. So just keep in mind when you're hearing the testimony tonight that I'm sure there'll be a lot of good testimony and a lot of things to consider. One thing to keep in mind is that this hearing before you tonight is quite a bit different from the Bailey Meadows hearing or a typical hearing in that it has a comp plan proposal before you, and one of the criterion that you can evaluate and look at within a comp comprehensive plan proposal is, does it have a public benefit? So in the recommendation section, and also one of the criterion within the staff report we laid out, what staff believes are the public benefits, an increased mix of housing types, the additional parkland finally being dedicated to the east of Deer Point Park. The applicant's also proposing to work with the city to actually develop that park and get SDC credit for that development of the park, which is a great advantageous thing for the city, because the parkland will finally be developed after waiting for almost fifteen years. And the other great thing is, we don't pay prevailing wage if the applicant constructs the park themselves, and we give credit, because it's not a city-funded project, per se. And then we also don't have to hire a project manager to do the parkland improvements. So there's a bunch of benefits for the applicant's willingness to do the parkland improvements. The other thing I really want to highlight is the Dubarka Road extension to Highway twenty-six. I believe that's a really big public benefit. I'm sure some of the people in Deer Point Park or Deer Point subdivision will agree with me on that. But it has been under TSP, I believe, since at least nineteen ninety-seven. We tried to fund it with a gas tax, maybe five, six years ago, but the gas tax failed. So this is a good, a good way to fund TSP road extensions is through development. And it was pointed out at the Planning Commission hearing that there's been a lot of talk in the community about development paying for itself. And I just want to say that, you know, I don't know if the applicant needs all this increased density to help everything pencil, but I assume from talking to them, that's the case. And this proposal, I think, is a good example of potentially looking at a proposal, changing the zoning around a little bit to help the project pencil and for having development pay for itself at the same time. So I understand that there'll be a lot of public comments, probably some against the proposal. But staff feels it's a pretty good proposal after working with the applicant for over the past year, and the Planning Commission recommended approval to City Council. So I just wanted to kind of highlight some of those main things.
Okay, thank you, Kelly and staff. Is that the conclusion of tonight's staff report?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll probably have some more stuff in the rebuttal stage, but yeah, that's all for now.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and go to the applicant's presentation, twenty minutes. And Jeff, I'll be looking you to keep time, please.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can I just confirm you can hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
All right, thank you. My name is Tracy Brand, I'm the planner for the project. And Jeff, if you wouldn't mind giving me a warning of within about three minutes left or so, that would be great.
Absolutely.
I don't think I'll need the entire twenty minutes. I would like to introduce Mike Robinson, who's been the attorney on the project, Ray Moore of Volcanic Surveyors and Planners, who's been the civil engineer, and Mike Ard, who is the traffic consultant. And they'll be available for any questions you might have. First of all, I want to thank staff and the planning commission for all their hard work and the unanimous recommendation of approval by the planning commission. A little brief history of the project was alluded to by Counselor Petezel. Originally, a subdivision was approved on the site and also a zone change back in two thousand and six. This approval expired because of a final plat was not submitted within two years. It was then reinstated in two thousand and thirteen, and then it expired again for a second time in two thousand and fifteen. And I believe a big part of the reason is the challenging nature of the site, given the location of Dubarka Road and Highway twenty-six on the site. A brief summary of the project you have before you tonight is a result of comments we received from both staff, the planning commission, as well as the public. Originally, the plan didn't include any commercial land. And after staff's initial review, the plan was modified to include a commercial lot. That's lot seven on the plan. And this lot exceeds what currently exists on the site, zone commercial. After the initial Planning Commission public hearing in August, and based on the comments from the public hearing and public testimony, or the planning commission and public testimony, we modified the plan again to change the zoning of lot five from high-density residential to medium-density residential. In addition, Ray of Volcanic looked at the stormwater system a little bit more carefully, and we were able to eliminate a pipe that went behind those single-family residential lots. And so as a result, we were able to retain some more trees behind those lots. We also hired a landscape architect to design what is called a landscape buffer at the rear of these lots, and believe that's part of your packet. This will provide a better buffer between the existing residential homes and the new development that abut the residential lot. So the current proposal, as was mentioned, includes seven lots, four for single-family detached residential, one lot for multifamily or medium-density residential, one lot zone high-density, and one zone Village Commercial. In addition, there is one point four three acres of parkland that will be dedicated. We are proposing two different areas of tree retention, one kind of near the intersection of Dubarka and Highway twenty-six, and it'll be a grove of trees in that location. And that grove unto itself meets the tree retention requirements of the city. But in addition, we're saving several trees behind those single-family residential lots, as I mentioned before. I would like to highlight two key components of the proposal, both the Barco Road and the proposed park dedication. As was mentioned, Dubarka Road has been part of the city's TSP for a pretty long time and is a key missing link to the completion of this road. It's, and it's not an insignificant facility in terms of cost. There's quite a bit of cost with that, and the coordination with ODOT to get that road to connect with the highway, as well as frontage improvements along the highway. In addition, the park that we're proposing next to the existing Deer Point Park, that park was dedicated in two thousand and seven as part of the Deer Point subdivision, but to date, it hasn't been developed. But it's my understanding that the city is currently working on a master plan for the park in particular. And actually, I've met with the Parks Board three times over the course of this project and discussed the project with them, and their latest recommendation to you indicates that they're in favor of the park dedication and the concept of working together with the developer in building the park. So as I mentioned, we are interested in entering into an agreement with the developer to construct the park. And this is, you know, a win-win situation, because construction of the park will not only benefit the city residents, existing city residents, but those residents, those future residents that would come and live in the multifamily or the single-family dwellings that would be constructed on this property. And that would be a separate agreement that could follow approval of the application. So in conclusion, the applicant is very excited to see this project through to completion. As detailed in the findings contained in the staff report, the proposal meets or exceeds all code criteria, and the planning commission recommended unanimously to approve the application. Approval of the application will result in additional single-family and multifamily housing, as well as some commercial business options on that commercial property. Dubarka Road will finally be extended to connect to Highway twenty-six, and the additional parkland with what is proposed will total about two point eight acres, a pretty substantial park in this neighborhood of the city. And those park improvements could be completed with this project. So that concludes my presentation. Wanted to make it kind of short and to the point. And if you had any questions for me or any of the team, we'd be glad to answer those.
There we go, and unmute. Thank you, Tracy, appreciate it. Is that the conclusion of the applicant's report at this time?
Yes.
Any questions from council for the applicant at this time? Okay, thank you very much. All right, so now it's time for public testimony. Here are the guidelines for those who wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is sufficient to state that you agree with the statement of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed into the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is properly processed. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I will now call for testimony in favor of the proposal. A reminder to please state your name and mailing address for the record, and you'll be provided three minutes. Jeff, I'll take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Just take a, take a look at the list of attendees. Any hands raised? And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Okay, thank you. I will now call for testimony against the proposal. Just another reminder to please state your name and mailing address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Jeff?
Okay, Mayor, I do have one hand up. I will allow this person to unmute themselves now. Please state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. I will jump in and let you know when there are about twenty seconds left.
It looks like it's Anne Rule. Hello, welcome.
Yes, thank you. My name is Anne Rule. I live at one eight three six eight Meadow Avenue. This development will be directly behind me. I do want to thank the developers. I do, I do believe that they've done a lot of work into their very first I do believe that they've done a lot of work into their very first proposal and to what has is being proposed now. The extra trees, the parkland, you know, some things like that are awesome. But I'm still against the amount of high density housing that that they want to put back there. From the very original proposal, it's gonna, to my understanding, it'll increase from 152 units to 224 units. And then you still have the village commercial, which I believe can also have the possibility of having more apartments placed on that, if I'm correct. And even if we go to the original ones, I realize that a homeowner or a contractor could put a duplex where the single houses are. You know, and that and that's okay. It's still less than what an apartment building would be as far as density and the amount of people there. And in my belief, I feel that a duplex owner kind of has a vest, more of a vested interest in in keeping their property up than, you know, an apartment, just an apartment complex with somebody just running their, their apartments. I would really like the council to reconsider the high density piece of this and make it, make it smaller. Put more medium density in there. So that's, that's what I've got. And, and the other thing is, I think across the street, across Highway 26, they're putting in a ton of apartments there. Do we want apartments, you know, on both sides of the highway? With that many of them. So those are my concerns. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Thank you, Anne. Appreciate it. We are still looking for testimony against the application. Remember to state your name and address for the record. Jeff.
Okay, Mayor, I'll go ahead and click on the next name. And you'll have three minutes. Please remember to state your name and address for the record. Welcome.
Hey, Richard Sheldon, 39610 Wall Street. Yeah, I wanted to testify against this proposal. I have a few issues with it, and there are more from a global issue. I don't, I don't particularly live in that area, but this is more of a global thinking piece. The first thing I'd like to say is a lot of this development that's getting kind of pushed upon us is being pushed under the needed housing. This doesn't seem to fit that criteria. This is something that we as a city have discretion in, and we do get to control that. And I think we need to honestly look and see what is best for our citizens as a whole and not what's best for the developer. Kelly kind of stated that the applicant is gonna, stated that they needed this to upsize this to build this connection to Highway 26. I'm not in this business. But I don't, the other thing I don't understand though is, or I should say that I do understand is their business. They're going to do what's best to incorporate, to improve their profit margin. I believe there's probably other ways we can get there. And maybe other developments that are being there. We don't have to do this one size fits all. The other piece is, I think that's the most important is people in this area had bought homes thinking this is R1 behind them. Expecting to have other future neighbors in a single family house in a neighborhood that they're much similar to what they're living in. Putting apartment complexes, as we saw over at Bluff in Sandy Heights, is not a good, healthy thing for a community. It's going to cause parking issues, and there's going to be a substantial amount of traffic issues that are going to be inherent with the increased density in that area. If we start talking about if it ends up becoming a lower income thing where things like transportation and stuff becomes a barrier. It's on the opposite side of town from where all of our resources are at. We're putting people that have those issues on the other side. It's, it's just not a very thoughtful place to be putting this kind of a density when we can obtain the same thing with our R1 density and keep the same houses. I think once again, I think what's really important is while we should care what the developers are doing, we, in this particular case, we need to care about what our citizens and what our neighbors down there think and say about this. And we do have the control this time. I think it's important to utilize that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it.
Okay, Mayor, we do have another hand up. You should be able to unmute yourself now, and please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes. I'll let you know when there are about 20 seconds remaining. This person signed in under the name Cam.
Hi, my name's, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yep, we can hear you.
My name's Cam Stray. I live at 18197 Antler. I just bought this house recently thinking it was going to be, you know, all R1 zone all around me, and it's just kind of a surprise. I think Sandy's grown pretty quick, and I agree with the previous people. So, yeah, that's all I really have to say. I just want my voice to be heard.
Thank you, Cam. Appreciate your time this evening. Just a reminder, if you'd like to participate, please click the raised hand button, or if you're via telephone, star nine.
Okay, Mayor, we do have another hand up. You should be able to unmute yourself now. This person signed in under the name Zoe. And please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Welcome, Zoe. Please remember to unmute yourself. We can't hear you yet.
There should be a button popping up in front, allowing you to unmute yourself now. Oh, there we go.
It looks like you are now unmuted. Try speaking, Zoe. Well, we still cannot hear anything, unfortunately.
Mayor, would you like to try the next person? And maybe we can.
Yeah, let's try the next person, and then Zoe will try back at you afterwards.
Okay, Mayor. Now we have Kathleen Walker, and you should be able to unmute yourself now. And please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
15920 Southeast Bluff Road, Kathleen Walker. I think that one of the concerns that I have, there's been a lot of work done by the planners, and I really appreciate all that. But I've read some of the public letters that have been submitted to you all into the record. And they, the, the compilation of public comments that was presented tonight does not really clarify the real concerns of those people. It's, it tends to kind of dismiss them implying, you know, reasons that are somewhat, you know, spurious. They one of the comments that was submitted was that this does not meet planning goal number two. That says that the, the whole objective for comprehensive plans is that we create predictable outcomes for the people that live and operate in the community. And so those people bought, like this previous person said, you know, they buy their homes based on it being zoned a certain way. And for us to go on a case-by-case basis after the fact and start rezoning things does not allow us that predictable outcome understood under goal two of the state planning goals. That's a real concern. And I think that, like some of the other past people says, we have the ability to, to say no to this. The other thing that's important is that the mention of the specific area plan under 17.54.00. That whole process is in some, a process initiated by the city council and not by a developer. And also that process goes on to recommend that as part of the process, there be an advisory committee with the community members and, and different groups. And this, that was not at all submit, you know, part of this process. This has just been pretty much the developers and the planning department getting together and implying and then basically coming to a conclusion that this is in the best interest of the public residents, community members in Sandy, which I don't believe it is. The real important part here is some of the bonuses that appear to be using to sell this is that the parkland is going to be dedicated. That has to be dedicated regardless of this development. Whatever the development is here, that dedication would be required, no matter what it was zoned at. So that's not an extra bonus that we're getting. I appreciate, everybody appreciates the park. It's going to be great. The second thing is that, that, you know, the developers is volunteered to build it with some getting some reimbursements on their system development charges. So, and that's a great thing. But again, many of our developers have done that. That's not anything special. Any developer developing that site could offer to do that and get, it's actually a benefit for them because they get, you know, they get a good break on their development fees. So that's not a unique proposal. So I have concerns about how this is being sold and, and whether or not this, I don't necessarily believe this spot zoning of changing zoning is really in the best interest of our current residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Greatly appreciated. And one point of clarification is, is that public testimony was included in all of our packets for this meeting. We've also additionally received testimony after the public opportunity had come to pass. So I just, while we do appreciate staff's, you know, efforts for recapping that, it is incumbent on all of us counselors to read that public testimony, and I believe that we all have, but definitely appreciate you pointing that out. Jeff, why don't we try to give Zoe another opportunity?
Okay, Mayor. So there should be a button popping up for you, Zoe, to unmute yourself. And please state your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Right. Thank you. My name is Zoe McKenzie. I reside at the address 18428 Meadow Avenue. I'm neighbors with Anne, and the forest will be residential, which I appreciate that directly behind both Anne and I are residential, but I also really worry about that high density that everyone else has already mentioned inside the previous comments. To respect the rules of the meeting, I'd like to agree with everything that Ms. Walker said, and that's what I have to say for this evening.
Wonderful. Thank you very much, Zoe, for participating this evening. Jeff, it appears we have another hand up.
Okay, Mayor, this should be Linda Malone, and you should be able to unmute yourself now. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Welcome.
Welcome.
Linda Malone, 17740 Bluff Road. And I will also agree with the comments made by Kathleen Walker and the other participants in, from the public in opposing this development. I'd also like to say that in the past, we've given, we've been naive at times in the past and given the, the benefit of the doubt to the developer that they're going to do something that they think is in the best interest of the city. To be clear, developers aren't in the business of doing something that's in the best interest of the city. When given the opportunity to do what they think is best for the city or what is the most beneficial to their clients and the landowners, they will do the, the latter. And that's been proved in the past with both the Sandy Bluff development, where we went in and changed the zoning to give them some flexibility. And the flexibility that was taken in the past was to just cram as many units in as they could. And I have a feeling that if there is some discretion on the part of developers in this application of a range of volume or a range of density, it will err to the side of the greatest density possible or the greatest benefit to their pocketbook and not to the benefit of the cities. I know we don't have to take into consideration the volume of students in the schools or the overcrowding there. But since this is a discretionary action on the part of the council, you don't have to say no. It's not like putting a street in where you don't want to put a street in, but you're forced to under, you know, fear of lube. If you're looking out for the best interest of the whole city, I would say that this should be left as is, as R1, or at least have more controls in it to where you don't end up with, you know, 50% more density than what you had when people, you know, took on purchasing a property with the assumption that that was going to happen. I personally bought my house and they cut down the, you know, adjacent land four months after I bought it. That was nothing I could do about that. But this is something that the city can do something about for these citizens is to guarantee that what they bought is what they got and not going to be changed into high density crowded residential that overcrowds our schools, our streets, and basically gives the city very little bang for its buck at the end of it. I would urge that you vote to not grant the change of density to the low, from low density, and from R1 to the medium density, high density. Anyway, I hope you are considering all of those things tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Appreciate.
Okay, Mayor, just taking one more look. We do have another hand up. And let's see here. I'm sorry, Mayor, I'm trying to unmute this person. I have a little alert that's popped up here.
Hey, I see Dawn has been unmuted. I just don't see him in the meeting.
Okay, says this person's using a different version of Zoom. I think this should work. Dawn, you should be able to unmute yourself now. And please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have, please state your three minutes. There you are.
Hey, Dawn Hockenson, 39340 Glover Court here in Sandy. I wanted to, first of all, confirm or reaffirm some of the points made by Richard Sheldon, Kathleen Walker, and former Mayor Linda Malone. I think this last election raised a lot of questions with folks about the role of development and maybe some the interaction developers have had with the city and things that may not be as transparent or as open as they could be. And so I, I want to just kind of point out that three of those, three of us who are testifying would be on the council come January. And there might be a very different discussion potentially on January. I just want to point that out for the record. Not taking away from those who are serving through the end of the term. I mean, that's, that's, that's the process. However, I also would like to point out, in the interest of transparency, one of the things that I do in my work in dealing the public process is to make sure that the comments that come in as part of that public process are actually responded to. And I think that was pointed out earlier is those comments are collated, aggregated, summarized, but they're not necessarily responded to. Certainly not at a level that I would consider in, in the public processes that I work with. Lastly, just point out too that the, the technical points raised by Kathleen and the procedural points are something that I think is really important to me, to make sure that the letter of not just the law, but the procedures and the, and the process are followed to a T. That's something that's very important to me. And so it would appear that perhaps some of those things got skipped over a little bit. Perhaps it's an opportunity to get pause and to give a little time to work through some of that. So thank you for, for listening.
Thank you. Mayor, just to clarify, I got a, there was an alert that popped up for me. It said that that user was using an older version of Zoom, and I I thought that might have been the only way to allow him to speak. So I'll have to check into that for next time.
Okay, thank, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Change him back to, I apologize for the technical difficulties. Okay.
I guess as we look for that, one, one thing I would remind everyone is that, you know, this is a quasi judicial meeting in which counselors can only have so much interaction with the public during this. Because we do serve on a judicial body here, right now, where we have to try to remain as unbiased as possible. So I know one thing I've learned since becoming a new counselor over the last two years is our interaction is sometimes a lot less than we would necessarily like it to be as a result of those, those state laws. Thank you.
So Mayor, just taking one more look at the list of attendees for any hands. And I do not see any more raised hands.
All right. Thank you very much, Jeff. With that, I, this is now an opportunity where I will call for a neutral testimony. These are general comments, neither for nor against a proposal. And I'd like to remind everyone to please state your name and mailing address for the record, and you will also be provided three minutes. Just a reminder to click the raised hand button, or if you're participating via telephone, to dial star nine to raise your hand.
Okay, Mayor, just taking a look. And I do not see any raised hands.
Thank you, Jeff. I will now call for staff recap and recommendation.
Um, thanks. So I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. I know it can be kind of confusing when we throw out a lot of numbers for density calculations, like exactly how many dwelling units there can be. So I just wanted to clarify that. So for single family units, a maximum of 14 units. a maximum of 14 units in the medium-density residential, and a maximum of 130 units in the high-density residential comes out to 148, plus what might be proposed in village commercial. So I just wanted to clarify that. I wanted to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan. Specifically, what Goal Two talks about. So Goal Two, the, the land use, the state land use goal, talks about how planning decisions at the local level need to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. We've had some internal conversations about how the comprehensive plan is definitely in need of an update, and we've started initiating some conversations about working on that and getting the comprehensive plan updated. It's, right now, we're working with a comprehensive plan that was put into place in 1997, which I was eight years old, and I'm no spring chicken. So that's something that we need to definitely update, which will help us make future land use decisions that are in line with a comprehensive plan. I also wanted to talk a little bit about public comments. It's absolutely not my intent to dismiss any public comments. I'm just, you know, trying to get things for the sake of brevity put together in a, in a slideshow. And we welcome public comments. They're useful for us. They're useful in helping us sort of gauge, you know, what the reaction is to a development proposal. They were useful in, you know, changing the original developer's proposal to what they updated for the second planning commission meeting. And then, you know, just kind of, it was sort of stated a little offhand that maybe, you know, planning staff are kind of in cahoots with the developer, which is not true. I'm personally bound by a pretty robust code of ethics from the American Institute of Certified Planners, which just as like an anecdote, a couple of months ago, a developer brought it, or a home builder brought in some cookies to the Development Services Department, and I didn't even take a cookie because I didn't want there to be like any, any like even the appearance of any kind of kickback from a developer for me. I didn't, I wouldn't even need a cookie from a developer. So I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page with that, with the specific area overlay plan. The code in the, in chapter seven, in title 17, and in the comprehensive plan need to be updated. We read through the, what the code says about the specific area plan. It seems like it was made specifically talking about the Bornstead Village overlay. But we definitely agree that that needs to be updated and clarified in a lot of places. And that's some conversations that we've initiated inside the Development Services Department. And then finally, I just wanted to, you know, touch on, you know, developers making money and the public interest are not, don't have to be mutually exclusive, right? There are things that can coexist, and you know, I'm neither pro-development nor anti-development. But we can, we can negotiate things, we can talk about things, and we can have discussions about things to make sure that, you know, if developers are going to develop in Sandy, that, you know, some elements of the public interest are being met, which is what Kelly touched on, talking about, you know, the extension of Highway 26 and the extension of, in the building of Deer Point Park. So that was what I wanted to touch on. Kelly, did you have anything else to add?
Yeah, do you, you have your PowerPoint slide handy to bring up real fast?
Yeah.
The one that you presented tonight?
Yeah, which, which slide?
Oh, the slide that shows the current zoning?
Yes.
So I just, I just wanted to remind everybody that the current zoning actually has R2. That's the orange area. And that area multifamily is already allowed. So even if they weren't proposing a comp plan change or a zone change or any, anything tonight, if they're just proposing a regular subdivision using the existing zoning and comprehensive plan, there could still be multifamily on the orange piece within the red highlighted area. There could still be multifamily on the pink piece. So I ju, I just want to let everybody know that there could still be multifamily independent of the comp plan change that is proposed tonight. Would it be at a lower density? As some of the public commenters spoke to, yes, it definitely would be, because you don't have any R3 land. But there could be apartments with the existing zoning designations that are on the site. So I ju, I just wanted to make sure everybody understands that, because it sounded like a few, maybe two or three of the people that made public comments didn't quite understand that even with the existing zoning and comp plan designations, multifamily is allowable. It would just be less multifamily. And actually, with the existing zoning map, as you can see, they potentially could add multifamily even closer to Deer Point Park or Deer Point subdivision than what they're actually proposing before you tonight. So I just, I just want to make that really clear.
Kelly, yeah, but Kelly, just for clarification, though, I mean, you're talking a dramatic difference in, in density, correct?
Yeah, so I mean, it's a pretty good density increase. Yeah, for sure. But most of the density increase that you're going to be seeing is not located a budding Deer Point subdivision. It would be where the pink area is shown on this map. So it'd be out by the highway in the, what would it be, the southeast corner of the subject property? So it's that, you know, it wouldn't be abutting the existing residential lots that are in Deer Point subdivision. So I wanted to point that out. The, the only other thing I had, I think Shelley summarized most of the, the things really good. The whole specific area plan point that Ms. Walker brought up is a really good point. The code, the comprehensive plan currently says that whenever you propose development within a village designation, which this is all a comp plan designation of village, you have to also propose a specific area plan. Now, I don't think historically in Sandy since 1997, that's been followed. So there's a lot of instances in Sandy where developments occurred in village land with no specific area plans that accompanied those. There's tons of instances of this. So we were just trying to follow the comp plan by making them do a specific area plan. If you look at the specific area plan code section in, in title 17 of the development code, as Shelley pointed out, it's not clear what a specific area plan really even is. It doesn't have any information for staff to evaluate as far as, you know, does that mean more attention? Does that mean additional green street infrastructure or different environmentally sensitive infrastructure? What does that mean? It also does say in there that city council typically initiates specific area plans, but that if an applicant chooses to initiate a specific area plan, the city council may charge, may charge them a fee. That would never be a process. So I don't know why chapter 1754 was written like it was, but I'm not trying to throw shade at anybody that wrote that chapter, but it was written with a lack of context or knowledge of land use planning in Oregon and how it works, because it would always, always be initiated with staff for fees and for process, and then we'd go from there. So if you look at that chapter before the BVO section, so it's like 1754, 10, 175420, and 175430, there's a lot of stuff in there that doesn't give staff clear direction on how to process a specific area plan. It doesn't give the applicant, it doesn't give the planning commissioner, city council, on what to evaluate. So the only reason there's a specific area plan proposed is because in the comp plan, it says it has to be because it's village. So I just want to point that out and clarify that, that Ms. Walker's correct, that there wasn't a big additional process, there wasn't citizen committees, but there's also no real guidance in our code on how to do all that. So if we want to keep the specific area plan language in the future, I would say during our comp plan rewrite, we should really look at that code in more depth. But for tonight's purposes, there wasn't a lot for staff to go on in that chapter.
Thank you, Kelly. It looks like Counselor Smallwood has a question.
Yeah, so for Kelly or Shelley, maybe you can answer this. So under the current zoning for the high density, what is the difference in proposed units with the, with the new, with the new zoning change versus what's currently on the comprehensive plan?
Um, if you give me about two minutes, I can calculate that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Well, well, she calculates that, if you don't mind, Kelly. Could you give us a little bit of an idea? It's reference and testimony tonight. House bill, I believe it was House Bill 2003, which was the, you know, communities under 10,000, you know, duplexes and all that being allowed. Where would that come into play in, in a development like this?
I think it's 2001.
2001, yeah.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I might actually get some assistance from our attorney, David Doofman, on this. But so you, actually, I'm glad you referenced both house bills, because they're both kind of applicable. House Bill 2001 is the one that any city over 10,000 and under 25,000 will have to consider duplexes on any lot that allows a single-family home. So for the R1, for example, or even our SFR zone, once the city council either passes the House Bill 2001 code changes, which we're going to have before you in March, I believe, or no later than the end of June of 2021, we will have to allow duplexes wherever single-family homes are currently allowed. So how that would apply in this regard is that all the R1 lots, so all the R1 zoning land, that can all have duplexes on it. So it would double the density that is currently available there, potentially. House Bill 2003, this is where I would need more of David's assistance, but what it's basically going to be doing is that every eight years, a city the size of Sandy has to do a buildable lands inventory and look at if we need to expand our UGB again. So we, we just did this in 2015. The result of that was that we had to expand our UGB. Now we have about another four years before we have to do it again. But one of the big things in that house bill is that we will have to explore ways to encourage more affordable housing and more different housing types. So when you see the buildable lands inventory and the analysis that's done in the next three or four years, it's going to be a lot different than the 2015 analysis. We're going to have to show how within our existing UGB, we're accommodating density. And so something like this, like before you tonight, I'm not saying, I'm not trying to convince anybody to approve what's before you tonight or not, but what I am saying is that things like this will be things we have to consider and evaluate, like where within our UGB, if we're, let me take a step back. If our populate, projected population figures show that we're going to have X amount of increases in density over the next 20 years, where are those people going to go? And before we just expand the UGB like we did a few years ago, we're going to actually have to do more analysis and kind of show ways to increase density within the city limits. And also look at affordable housing, look at homelessness. So it's going to be a lot more exhaustive than what we had to do in 2015. Do you want to add anything to that, David?
I, I think you, you basically summarized it pretty well, Kelly. I mean, one of the biggest things is just really imposing a deadline and a requirement on the buildable lands inventory, housing needs projection process that right now, for a city of Sandy's size, doesn't really have any timeline. And so that becomes something that you affirmatively have to do, as Kelly said, every, I think it's eight years. And there's more detail that's going to go into that, and it certainly will weigh in favor of, of basically denser housing. I wouldn't say at all prohibiting expansion of a UGB, but really taking a much stronger look at what could be accommodated within a UGB as opposed to expanding it.
Basically, we're not, when we expanded it last time by five or 600 acres, this next time around, that would be a much more scrutinized process. And I think like Thousand Friends, which were involved with the last expansion, I think they would be very, they would be following very closely if we wanted to do another 600-acre expansion, and they would probably object to it and even appeal it if we didn't look at additional density measures.
And then Shelley, did you, were you able to find Counselor Smallwood's answer? And you're muted, just so you know.
Sorry. So with the existing zoning, there is allowed a maximum of 134 units. So with the proposed zoning, that maximum is 148, so that's a difference of 14, plus what would be allowed in the village commercial, which in fact, with the proposal, there's less village commercial being proposed than what is currently there.
No, I think that's the reverse, actually.
I'm sorry. I got that backwards. So yeah, so with the existing zoning, it's 134 dwelling units plus what might be allowed in village commercial.
So yeah, there could, there could be additional, because there is more village commercial, there could be more units in there than what would currently be allowed, just because there's more land. So that.
Thanks for doing that, Shelley.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one, the one thing to keep in mind, I'll just say this one last thing, since Stan asked me the question, is if you take all those numbers into account, say a lot of that R1 land with single-family homes, you know, some of that in the future could be duplexes. Now, would they convert to duplexes? Probably most of them wouldn't, but you would see some of them converting to duplexes, which is allowed even under current zoning, because it's R1. Our only zone right now, that doesn't allow duplexes without a conditionally used permit process is SFR, which isn't even in this proposal tonight.
Thank you. I see Counselor Exner with the question.
Just, just so I get my, I have two questions. One is about the, the number increase. Again, I, I thought I heard that something under 20 units was the maximum that we could expect the difference between current zoning requirements and what we're proposing here. So under 20, probably 14 is what it sounds like, is what they're proposing. So that's not exactly the horrendous amount that I was kind of thinking that this was going to be. So kind of a understanding difference than what I remember when I was working through the process here of evaluating. Okay, thank you for that. This is a question for Mike, I think. I'm really concerned about the transportation issues. I know that we didn't talk too much about that tonight with the comments from our public comments, but I happen to be living on Langin Sand in 26, and I see some real significant issues. And I know that the transportation history of that is relatively safe, but man, I know that the pressure on Langin Sand and 26, Tenac and 26, and Barco in 26 will be significantly increased and I just, but with only 14 additional units, it doesn't seem like that's a horrendous amount. So Mike, could you kind of give me an idea what the additional transportation stresses will be on those other three entrances onto our highways?
Can I just stop you one second? For procedurally, can we, so if, if the Q and A is done with staff, then I would prefer to give the applicant the chance to do their rebuttal first before we ask a Q and A?
Me too. Thank you.
I've got one more question.
For staff, yeah, Counselor Smallwood.
So if memory serves me correctly, to be considered kind of a healthy city, Kelly, we have to have a certain percentage of your high density, your mid-density and whatnot. Do you know about where we're sitting right now as far as high density with the city? What percentage?
I, I don't. I mean, anecdotally, I hear that we need more multifamily, but I also hear that we need more single-family, because whenever a new single-family home goes on the market, it's instantly sold. So I think, honestly, I think we're just lacking in housing over the entire spectrum, which includes single-family, multifamily, row houses, everything essentially.
Let me make a comment. As a Realtor, that's exactly right. We can't keep listings on our board. There seems like every part of this, of a range of houses is needed in the city, and we just can't seem to go fast enough. Our vacancy rates are very, very low, and this, it's actually a relatively big concern of mine, that we have real low pay conservates, which creates expensive housing, which creates more difficulties down the road with folks who are not able to buy, which creates housing shortages and people that can't be enabled to afford it. So there's some repercussions there.
Well, and we also, if, if I'm correct, Carl, maybe you can answer this. We have, we have a shortage of rental availability in this town as well, correct?
Absolutely. That's, we do need a, a number of increases in, like I said, all of our categories, but certainly rentals. I'm seeing some prices going now in our rentals that were unprecedented. I guess I use that word carefully because I hear it so often, but we're seeing some pretty high rates in some places that make it difficult for people to afford. So definitely in that category.
Just a reminder that we're talking supply and demand. You're talking a lot about demand. It doesn't mean you always have to match the supply either. Counselor Pete Sold.
Yeah, a couple of questions. As I mentioned earlier on, that I was on the planning
that I was on the planning commission as well as Carl back when this development was approved, when it was back and it was called Vista Loop South development, and then there was a Vista Loop North development. And when we approved both of those, and then subsequently we changed or expired, and we approved the ones on the south side a couple of times more. In that, though, one of the big things that we talked about during that process, and I'm concerned about as well, so if you don't mind answering that, is where it connects to Highway twenty-six. Because of the stacking, and mainly the stacking on the north side of the highway, because as it comes into the other housing areas on the other side, the stacking piece, if it's not corrected on the south side, it has a ramification on the north side when things get developed on that. As we know, there isn't much of a stacking piece there. So Kelly, what did, what was the process with the city on this or discuss? I don't see kind of, or maybe I missed it on that aspect of things. Or maybe Shelley, sorry, I don't mean to jump to Kelly. Maybe it's Shelley should answer that.
Yeah, I mean, I can answer. Shelley can piggyback and if I miss anything, but I mean, neither Shelley or I or Emily either in our department are transportation experts by any means. So the applicant, and this is pretty much the result of any large subdivision or development proposal, the applicant hires a transportation engineer, in this case, Mr. Mike Ard. They put together a traffic study and they evaluate different intersections for both safety, stacking capacity and that kind of stuff. And then that goes to our transportation engineer, John Replinger, who we hire. Actually, the applicant pays for Mr. Replinger to review it just because we don't have any other way of collecting money for his review. But he reviews it on behalf of the city, so he's looking out for the city's interest, and he points out any flaws or any issues in it and works with the applicant's engineer to either overcome those flaws or do some additional analysis or recommends mitigation techniques to city staff, including myself, Shelley and Mike Walker. In this instance, ODOT was also involved because ODOT is a reviewing agency also because they are making intersection improvements to Highway twenty-six. So in some subdivisions or development proposals, it's just basically the city and the transportation engineer from the applicant's team. But in this case, there was actually ODOT transportation engineers also evaluating it. And then as staff, so myself and Shelley, we rely on all those experts to give us opinions and advice on the mitigation techniques, the safety, the stacking, because like I said, we're not experts in that.
Okay, thank you. If there's no.
Follow up, I didn't know Shelley was going to. So in that, because it was decided fifteen years ago that that road should be moved farther to the east, is that the same? Because all those experts were part of that process back then when Tracy was the plan director, is that the same thing now is it should be farther to the east? Because I didn't see that on the map where the road comes out at, and maybe it's just the design of the map. So I guess you told me, you know, all the people that look at it, but I didn't hear from hearing all that, how it overlaid with the existing one that did show that it needed to be moved more to the east for that stacking on the north side.
I'm not aware of that. I mean, that's what I'm saying is we rely on those experts to point out those flaws or, you know, ODOT, we rely on them to point out where the stacking should begin where the intersection improvement should occur. That's not something that a land use planner would get overly involved in. I don't know if Tracy during their rebuttal has any more information that he remembers from two thousand and seven. But I believe where they're proposing it to intersect with the highway is consistent with the TSP from two thousand and eleven. But yeah, I would welcome to highlight that if he has any other information.
I was just going to, one quick thing, I think it's probably best at this point, unless there are any other burning questions for staff, to just go ahead and have the applicant give rebuttal because there may very well be other questions that result from that.
Thank you. That's what I was hoping for. Seeing no objection from counsel, let's go ahead and move ahead with applicant closing testimony, seven minutes. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, and members of City Council. My name is Michael Robinson. My mailing address is one-two-one-one Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite nineteen hundred, Portland nine-seven-two-zero-four. So as always, we appreciate time to talk to you and we appreciate your questions. I'm going to I'm going to depart a little bit from what I intended to do in my seven minutes, Mayor. I want to go directly to what Counselor Exner and this will ask. First of all, we have an additional safeguard in this case because we have to amend the zoning map and the conference of plan map. That's the transportation planning rule. And that required extra scrutiny, not only from your traffic engineer, but from ODOT as well. And we have a trip cap limit, which effectively means we're not going to generate more traffic. So concerns about traffic impacts simply, I'll say misplaced because the evidence in the record, which you have to rely on is legally and factually, we're not going to create more trips, and that's because of the TPR. Secondly, Mike Ard and I have talked several times with ODOT. They have no concerns about the intersection. And Counselor Fitzold, I hope that you all will ask Mike a little more.
It's Pete, by the way.
Sorry?
It's Pete Sold.
I'm terrible with names. Don't vote against us because of me. Or for any reason, frankly. But please ask Mike before we close the record tonight about more specific traffic information. But ODOT, as Kelly has said, has been involved in this. They've not issued an adverse comment, nor has John Replinger. So what you have is a record which you have to rely on that shows the traffic evidence is satisfied, and that's our burden, and that's something we take very seriously and we need. So let me go back and do a couple of things. First of all, I want to go back and summarize three things that are important in this application. It provides a range of new housing, including multifamily housing. And when we talk about housing in public hearings, it sounds as though apartments are just flat-out evil, or there's something wrong with the people that live in them. All of us have lived, I think, in apartments at one time or another, and our friends and family continue to live in apartments. They're simply another form of housing. And to say that the owners don't have an interest in maintaining that interest, well, the bank might have something different to say. Apartments are a form of housing allowed and they make sense. But beyond that policy discussion, your decision is informed by your approval criteria. And I'd remind you tonight, you haven't heard anything about approval criteria not being met. Whereas we had two long planning commission hearings where they found all the approval criteria met and two staff reports resulting in the same conclusion. Secondly, we're bound by evidence. And as I just described with respect to traffic, we had to meet other kinds of evidentiary requirements, and we've met all those. Let me go back to multifamily for a minute. You don't have any adverse comments from any of the service providers in terms of fire, traffic, transportation utilities. So all of things needed to support multifamily is there, and multifamily has always been a part of this project. I was involved when this project was first improved, almost approved fifteen years or so ago. And we had a number of discussions about that. So we had commercial at that time as well. So what matters in this application is whether we've met our approval criteria. You haven't heard any approval criteria tonight that haven't been met. Planning Commission staff found they're met. And there's no evidence to the contrary that multifamily is either inappropriate in this location or can't be supported. In fact, the evidence is just the other way. And that may sound like just a lawyer talking, but that's what this process is all about. As the mayor pointed out, it's quasi-additional. Yes, there's discretion, but the discretion is bound up in your approval criteria which you've enacted. And that's important to the process. We all have to give faith to it. The second thing I want to remind us all about is we are providing an additional park area and we're developing it. Your code allows dedication or fee in lieu. And as I recall, the last general consensus of the council is they would take fee in lieu, but we've offered dedicated. And what we're not required to do, what we've offered to do is develop it. That is a public benefit. And lastly, Debarco Road, which has been on your TSP for twenty-five years, is going to be finished by this applicant. So there is a benefit to the public. I agree with staff, and I think that's part of the code approval criteria. Let me talk then, and I should say notwithstanding all this, we appreciate the public and we, I think frankly, as Ann Rule said, we did a better application after we listened to the neighbors. We increased tree retention. We changed the density adjacent to the neighbors, and we provided open space. All of that provides a buffer to their park, their point park to the west. Let me talk a little bit about what Ms. Walker said. Mayor, Jeff, how much time do I have?
You have two minutes and ten seconds.
Thank you. So remember who gets notice of this kind of application, DLCD, which is the keeper of the statewide planning goals. You did not get an adverse comment from DLCD saying we hadn't met the statewide planning goal. We met all of the applicable goals. And I think staff did a nice job of summarizing them. What Ms. Walker said about statewide planning goal two is simply inaccurate. What the goal says, if you want to read it, is quote, "to establish the land use planning process as a basis for land use decisions," end quote. Doesn't say that zoning is fixed in stone. In fact, the planning document Ms. Walker submitted to the planning commission says that zoning is not engraved in stone, end quote. Zoning changes if we meet the approval criteria, and that's what we're proposing to you tonight. Your testimony about goal two is just flat-out wrong, and I take no pleasure in saying that, but it's incorrect. That's not what goal two says. It's a process. It's not a result. What else? So probably a minor point, but we've heard spot zoning now for two hearings. Spot zoning doesn't exist as a legal concept in Oregon. Shelley did a nice job of explaining that to the planning commission last time. What happens is if you approve the comp plan map amendment, then the zoning implements that. That's the difference between Oregon and East Coast states where spot zones, where spot zoning actually exists as a concept. But as long as you find you meet the approval criteria, then there's no such thing as spot zoning. Only other point I would make is this idea that when people bought homes, they were always going to have the zoning that was next to them. And I think it's important to try and, it's certainly important to meet the approval criteria. It's important to have neighborhoods that work with one another, but there's no such thing as fixed zoning in the state. And if you had that, you'd never be able to meet the kinds of challenges.
Twenty seconds.
So Mayor, members of the council, before you close the hearing, please ask his questions. I can't do as good a job answering Mr. Art, answering transportation as Mr. Art can, but I'd encourage you to ask him. And we appreciate your time and hope that you'll follow your planning commission's unanimous recommendation and approve this application. And we thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. So the next move would be to close the hearing. I know there's some questions for the applicant, the applicant's team. I believe Counselor Exner, you had one. If you remember it, I don't. So if you want to go ahead and use this as an opportunity to re-ask your question.
Sure. Do I need to make a move to?
No, no, we need to keep it open if we're going to have some back and forth. Otherwise, it's just left to us as council and staff to deliberate.
So this is a question for Mike. In all the locations that we're going to have, obviously cars increased into this, different sections of the city, the three really, the main streets, the Langen Sand, Tenac Wolf and Debarco, even though I know the end of Debarco in twenty-six is going to be open. All the conversations that looked like, that I read, were that the delays in getting on to Highway twenty-six, anything but a right-hand turn would be very long. So my guess is that much of the, not, it meant all of the traffic will be moved towards those other three roads. And in my, admittedly, I haven't been here the longest in the world, but I live right on the corner of Langen Sand and twenty-six and I see, hear screeches all the time. I know that there are difficulties with getting on and approaching from a dead stop to that traffic place. Is there any conversation about additional road improvements to Debarco to make it so that it isn't that long distance waiting to get on to twenty-six? I just, you know what happens when somebody gets there for two or three minutes waiting for a gap, they take chances that they shouldn't have. Thanks. I guess that's a question to Mike.
I didn't realize I could unmute myself. I was waiting. Sorry about that. Yes, you're right that there is some congestion that occurs particularly surrounding the intersection of Highway twenty-six at Langen Sand under existing conditions. During the peak hours, the average delays indicate that the intersection's operating at level of service F. So it is a long delay associated with that. As we prepared the traffic analysis, we were cognizant of the fact that there are some locations that do have high delays. The Oregon Department of Transportation establishes the criteria for what is acceptable and what is not acceptable at intersections that are on state highways. And their metrics for intersection operation are not based on the average delay, rather they're based on what's called the volume to capacity ratio. So if we look at how many people is the maximum number of cars that can make a particular turning movement, and then we look at the actual observed demand divided by that maximum number, it gives us a ratio. And in this case, the ratio that we're seeing for existing conditions, I have to look it up on my report here. Actually, it's background conditions that I'm looking at for year two thousand and twenty-two. If nothing is implemented, we would see that Langen Sand Highway twenty-six would be at a volume to capacity ratio of zero point six-two during the PM peak hour, and we do show that as going up to as high as zero point seven-one with the project, basically indicating that there is increased demand at that intersection when we build something on this property. Now, a couple of things that are relevant here. First is that we're initiating a zone change in association with this development, and in conjunction with the zone change, we have established a trip cap. That trip cap limits the traffic levels generated by this property to no more than what's allowed under the existing zoning. And there's a bit of an irony in the fact that the state has undertaken this process to change the land use laws in Oregon such that we're now allowing duplex units on single-family homes. What it means ultimately is that if you approve this zone change tonight, you lock in how many trips this property can generate. And if you denied that, then the number of trips actually will increase when that duplex zoning is implemented. So the number of trips that can be generated and will impact the intersections at Langen Sand, at Tenac and at Debarco is actually going to be slightly lower with approval of this project than with denial of the project. It's an unexpected twist as far as I was concerned, because at the time that I was preparing the traffic study, I certainly wasn't anticipating that that would be coming down our Oregon land use process. But it does mean that we're in a strange and unique situation where what would otherwise be considered a potential increase, and we've capped it to prevent that increase, actually translates to a decrease in real-world traffic. In terms of the operation of Langen Sand in particular, our expectation is that as that intersection approaches capacity and as delays get long, people are going to divert to other paths. And Tenac is one of those paths that's available. The major one that would be used probably by this development would be to travel westbound on Debarco Road to reach Highway two-eleven and come up into the city that way, because let's face it, Langen Sand isn't a great alternative when it's got the high delays that it's got. And getting to Tenac can be a little bit difficult from the area of this development. Traffic does flow like water in that as people find that there's a faster path available, they will divert to other locations. I would expect in the future that there will be more traffic moving toward Tenac and moving toward Highway two-eleven. But because Langen Sand is so close to capacity under existing conditions, I don't expect it to get a lot worse than what it is currently. And I hope that answers your question.
Pretty much. I was using Langen Sand as, in my mind, an example of what I thought Debarco would look like. They're pretty close. Their main streets, they're going to get on the same highway within a quarter mile of each other. So I just, my guess is that.
So I agree with that, and I'll tell you, when I prepared the traffic study, one of the things that I noticed, first of all, is that if you're living in an area that's west of Highway twenty-six but near Debarco Road, you actually have to have a little bit of out-of-direction travel. You have to travel eastbound to the Highway twenty-six intersection before you can make that left turn to go westbound. So there's a little bit of a counterintuitive movement there that suppresses some traffic. But again, the delays associated with that left turn movement are going to hold the volumes down pretty low, I think, there. It's one of the reasons that early on in the process, I analyzed that intersection as a right-in, right-out intersection because I did anticipate that there'd be difficulties associated with left turns. ODOT was very strongly against the idea of right-in, right-out. They want to have that TSP mandated connection that was in your nineteen ninety-five TSP, and frankly, is five years late for the twenty-year projection that was made at that time. That document showed that it was necessary to complete the Debarco Road extension by two thousand and fifteen. And we're not going to get it until two thousand and twenty-two, probably, at least two thousand and twenty-one, but probably two thousand and twenty-two, I would guess, the way things are going now, and of course, later if additional problems arise. So we are trying to take some pressure off of the transportation system. The connection of Debarco Road will allow some diversion of traffic that's traveling between Highway 211 and Highway 26. So south of the city on Highway 26 and east of the city, I'm sorry, south of the city on Highway 211 and east of the city on Highway 26 can take that bypass route through Debarco Road. The traffic coming eastbound through there will be making right turns onto the highway, which is a relatively low delay movement. The traffic coming from Mount Hood area and making the left turn onto Debarco Road will only need to yield to the southeastbound traffic on Highway 26. So not terribly problematic there either. But what that does is move traffic away from the through highway on Highway 26 at Langen Sand. And so you actually get a little bit more capacity that would be available at Langen Sand by virtue of that diversion.
Question, you said that the ODOT was very much against restricting the left-hand turns on that Debarco 26 intersection? So there won't be any island or anything preventing cars from trying to make the left-hand turns?
No, they've been very adamant that will not be permitted under any circumstances.
Wow. But there will be a middle turn lane in the center.
Turn lane, it is my expectation that that will be part of any design that's ultimately approved for that intersection, yes.
Okay.
Counselor Pete Stoll?
I didn't have my hand up yet.
Oh, you were ready, buddy.
So what I'm hearing is that there'll be a left-hand turn off of the highway onto Debarco, but not a left-hand off of Debarco onto Highway 26?
I'm sorry if I was confusing on that. All left-turn movements will be permitted at this intersection per ODOT.
Oh, so you will be able to turn left off of Debarco onto Highway 26 and go west?
I'm not anticipating that we're going to have a lot of demand for that movement just because of the geometry and the delays associated with it. But that will be a lawful turning movement with a lane provided.
And then you're saying off of Highway 26, left onto Debarco? So what you're suggesting is to use a local road as a bypass for Highway 26 and 211 through Sandy? And go down Debarco as the bypass as.
Debarco Road is an arterial classification roadway. And it is an arterial specifically because it was intended to serve this bypass function. And that was what was drafted up in the 1995 transportation system plan. And it still exists in the current city transportation system plan today.
And then built a bunch of residential homes around a bypass. It was awesome. Counselor Smallwood, you have a question?
Yeah, just real quick. Mike, maybe you can answer this. What is going to be the distance? And I believe it was asked earlier, and then just Kelly, Kelly wasn't sure. What's going to be the distance between the extension of Debarco or the connection to 26 from Langen Sand?
I'm sorry, I'm trying to understand the endpoints that you're asking.
So from where Langen Sand Road currently comes out onto Highway 26, what is the distance from the proposed Debarco intersection with Highway 26? Do you have any idea? Half mile, quarter mile?
I can pull that up for you. Let me see here. While I'm looking at this, I did want to say in response to the mayor, just to make sure that we're clear on this point, that Debarco Road was not designed as a bypass specifically per the city's TSP. A bypass was included in as an option in the 1995 TSP, but the city chose not to pursue a bypass, which would avoid development areas and rather develop a.
Understand, I'm just, my argument is, is they did build the bypass. That is what it's used for. But in their pretend of not doing it, they ended up with a bunch of unsafe residential homes on a very busy street. I'm not very excited about past decisions.
So distance between the new intersection on Highway 26 at Debarco and the existing intersection of Langen Sand at Highway 26 is 0.43 miles per my measurement.
Okay, thank you.
I think just for the point of clarification, the question that Jeremy asked me, I think, was, does the Debarco Road, the proposed Debarco Road intersection at Highway 26, should that have been further east? And I don't, I don't believe that's the case. But if you could just highlight that, Mike?
I can try to. I haven't heard specific talk about moving that intersection to the east. The primary goal that ODOT has in locating the intersection is to try to improve safety of operation. And their philosophy is that an aligned intersection has fewer points of access to the highway than a misaligned intersection or a pair of T-intersections. Reducing the number of points of access is one of the primary goals of Oregon's Division 51 access rules. And while I can't say with 100% confidence that they would not be open to shifting it, they have indicated pretty strongly that they wanted that alignment to be opposite the west end of Vista Drive at this point. We are going through a grant of access process or what's likely to be a grant of access process with ODOT as part of this development. That's one of the conditions of approval. There will be a very detailed analysis of operation at 20 years into the future. And we will have to address operation and safety of the intersection at that time in order to get the access approved and a construction permit in hand.
Okay, thank you, Kelly, for bringing that up. Because yeah, that was one of my questions I had from 15 years ago when Carl, myself sat on this. Tracy was the planning director and David was still our lawyer on that process, that ODOT was part of that process and that had to be shifted to the east because of the northbound side of the stacking. Because if you've ever driven on it, there is no stacking between it and the driveway to the side. And that was something that was brought up by them back then, as we sat through the many, many meetings of that process. So that's why I bring it up, because it obviously was pretty printable on my brain from the process we went through, knowing it was just right down the road there.
Quite a bit of stacking room available for the new Debarco Road approach to Highway 26.
On the north side. I'm talking on the north side.
On the north side, the majority of traffic is making the right turn, which is a relatively easy comparatively movement onto Highway 26. There is obviously a loop there where Vista connects to Highway 26 further to the west. So there's also kind of an overflow valve, if you will, there. Under existing conditions, interestingly, we measured the traffic volumes that are, and I have to scan to the correct page of my report here so that I make sure I'm not remembering this wrong. But my recollection was there's extremely little traffic making the left turn out of Vista Loop Drive under existing conditions. And as I look at that, the number of vehicles making the left turn during the AM peak hour is zero. And during the PM peak hour, zero. So as we measured that, the volumes really are incredibly low there for the Vista Loop Drive approach to Highway 26. I suspect that there are some people going out the other direction. I suspect that there are some people that are making those turning movements outside those two identified peak hours. But obviously, it's very difficult to make that movement during the peak hours based on the numbers we're seeing.
I'd like to address that real quick, if you don't mind. Yeah, so the alignment on the south side of the highway, Jeremy, is the same as it was proposed under that initial subdivision. And on the north side, the stacking distance would be taken out of that property just to the east of where the Vista apartments are. And so the road would, instead of curving almost immediately from the highway, it would have stacking for, I think, five or six cars. It would cut into that property and then make its curve to the east. And so both of those intersections would be opposing each other. But the, you know, but the land would be, stacking on the north side would be done at the time that property developed. That's, that's the way the Vista Loop North and South was designed.
Okay, so it was moved, but with that, using that piece of property on the north side.
The alignment is the same, but the stacking distance would be increased because the road would be, basically, the road would be extended north into that property and then curved to the east to connect with the existing Vista Loop. So that portion of Vista Loop that's currently exists there would probably be vacated because the road would be north of that, and it'd be vacated to the property on the south side of that road. If that makes sense, but it.
Thanks, Tracy. I didn't have that oracle context to know what the older plan looked like.
Yes, but at this stage, the alignment on the south side is exactly what was approved before.
Immuded, Stan.
Mr. Moore, Ray Moore, did you have some comments you were hoping to add?
Again, for the record, Ray Moore, P O Box 955 Sandy, Oregon. I just wanted to kind of say exactly what Tracy did. When we first started this project, I came over to the city hall, talked to Mike Walker. He enrolled the plans that AKS had completed. They did 100% of the engineering. They had ODOT permit already obtained. They just had to pay the fee to pick up the permit. So I started with those plans. So, you know, those issues, Jeremy, were worked out back then with AKS. So we just kind of followed suit, started with exactly the same position that they had the road intersecting the highway, so.
Okay, thanks, Tracy.
Thank you. And Mike and Tracy, did we get your names and addresses for the record as well?
I'll give mine first. It's Mike Ard, A R D. My address is 17790 Southwest Dodson Drive, Sherwood, Oregon 97140.
And Tracy Brown, 17075 Fur Drive in Sandy.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there any other questions from council for the applicants before we go to close the hearing?
And Mayor, if I might just interrupt, given sort of the, you know, number of issues that the council is going to potentially talk about, I might suggest leaving it open just for now in case there is a question or two that sometimes comes up in these contexts. That way, you don't have to go and reopen the hearing. And maybe as you get a little bit closer to actually nailing down or having a consensus, then you choose to close that. It's up to you, but you may want to consider that.
That's great. Thank you, David. Appreciate that advice. Let's go ahead and move in that direction. So with that, is there, I'm looking for comments, discussion from council. At Counselor Lee.
If you take into consideration the difference in the number of units that was spelled out as being only 14 units difference, that doesn't seem to drive the kind of numbers that were referred to in the testimony. And I think we really need to serve all of our citizens and the people who want to be part of our community, not just those already here. We need to have that mixed housing available, because how many families can afford a $400,000 to $500,000 house? And that's really what the market price is now. If anything, we need to additionally develop affordable housing, a policy implemented. And as a result of House Bill 203, we will be required to do that. So we should get started down that track and make sure that it can be progressively accomplished. I resent innuendos against the staff who are just doing their job and the same with the planning commissioners. And I hope we can move away from that in the future. And I also hope we can move away from people providing inaccurate email blasts out to people to support their position instead of stating the true land use laws when they do such things. So that's all I have to say. I will be supporting this.
Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate it. Further discussion from council? Counselor Exner?
Hate to be the big mouth on this one. So besides being the big mouth, I'll try to keep my comments succinct here. First off, I'm pretty impressed by the work that the planning department and the planning director and the developer did to be able to incorporate, for example, the tree leave specifics that have happened here. Just really, I'm an advocate for leaving as many trees as possible. And I appreciate, just for example, the question, the way that they were able to move some of the drainage and allow more trees to be left up alongside the highway. I just, I want to appreciate that. I want to just say that is one of the things I think was done well on this one. I understand also the concern by the public. I just don't, just can't ignore that. The fact that I know a lot of people are very dissatisfied with having lots of neighbors when they bought their houses. I am, what to say about some of our realtors? You aren't informed about what the issues are and the future is around in your community you're doing some things with. I wonder just how much you should be advising your clients. You know that there's, some of these things are going to happen. This property not only has been planned a couple of times now, but it has been in the works for 15-plus years. I don't think that anything here would stop us from actually having a development. I think this is a very appropriate place to put it. I do have a high level of concern about the transportation. I just, I just know that there are issues currently. And I know that the cap will reduce the potential that it would have made. It will not reduce the number of transportation trips on these four roads that are going to be shown on the highway and both 211 and 26. So I know we're going to have more issues coming along. I think some of this has to do with the transportation plan revisions a city has to make. We do need, in my mind, a light there at Debarco and 26. Pretty, I think that's real critical, but that's going to be an ODOT decision. It's not something that's going to be determined by developer at this point. I just don't see that being impacted. I don't see any real issues that would make me say no to this particular development. I got to say, I was on the other side of the street when I first walked into this, looking at all the issues. I was highly concerned about transportation, concerned about listening to the citizens. But when you start seeing some of the potential differences in what would have been versus what we're doing here, they're pretty light and they're pretty well been modified. And quite frankly, as a realtor, we need this kind of building and housing. All from the beginnings, entry-level kind of folks, that's what the apartments and those kind of facilities are going to be for, as well as up through the more expensive three and four, $500,000 houses. So pretty tough to say no to this one, even though I have lots and lots of concerns about the transportation issue.
Further discussion by council? I have a question for staff. Has this development, have we heard any word from DEQ on additional hookups to our water, wastewater treatment system? Where would that be in this process?
That'd be, that'd be a good question to ask the Public Works Director. I have not personally received any input from DEQ, although I don't seek input from DEQ on that sort of question. So when we're getting development, we don't ask DEQ for their input on or how it impacts our infrastructure. However, we do have a city engineer and the Public Works Director that oversees the wastewater treatment plant. So I believe if they had concerns, they would have made comments in that regard. I did not receive anything from either one of those to say that. You know, one other thing, if you don't mind, Stan, that I just want to point out that I think was kind of lost in some of this is that some of the public testimony that you received is kind of against the concept of zone changes or comp plan changes. That's fine and well, and for people to have that opinion is fine and well. But if that's what we want to see happen in the city of Sandy, then we need to change the code so that comp plan and zone changes can only happen, say periodically every five years or something like that. I think a few cities around the state of Oregon have adopted regulations like that. So you basically get all the applications in at once, and then you review them to see which ones you like and which ones you don't. But under our current, I appreciate Counselor Lee's comments, because under our current development code, if an applicant proposes a comp plan change or a zone change, staff has to process that. And we don't automatically just have the capacity to throw all those out. We have to evaluate those proposals to the criteria, and that's what we've done in this case. So I just want to point that out, that if that's something that council wants to see modified in the future, that would take a development code amendment, but we're just trying to do the best we can within the existing code and what it allows and dictates for us to do, so.
Well, I'm hoping that Jordan or David could then take me through the process, because they do know that Bailey Meadows did have to receive a capacity approval from DEQ on additional hookups and in which they received approval on. I'm just curious if the decision from DEQ in that, in that way would come to bear on this.
I believe that comes after the land use approval process, or at least it did with the Bailey Meadows. And so they reviewed the plans following the land use approval. I don't know the ins and outs of that, David. I don't know if you know, but I remember that popping up after the land use approval.
It would be after, and then the. It would be after. And then the other question that I don't know the answer to, it's really a Mike question, would be whether there's an actual extension of the city's sewer system? Or is this just a, would this just be a straight connection to what already exists? And I mean, something beyond, you know, just your lateral type connection. I, I don't know. And so that plays into what authority DEQ has to review it as well.
Are you, are you asking about the Luxe Forum, the land use compatibility statement? Because DEQ does submit one of those, and then I basically have to fill out as the Development Service Director, whether the subdivision has been approved or not, but.
No, I'm just talking additional capacity of our treatment center for additional hookups. So it sounds like it happens after.
It would be.
Okay. Counselor Exner and then Pete Zoll.
Yeah, real quick, what's the expect from the developer? What's the expected time of construction of these houses? Are we talking 22, 23? Or do you think the bulk of the housing will be constructed? Thinking there.
Yeah, we haven't discussed the exact timeline, but I'm guessing 21, later 21, 22, 23. You know, the next step, if this is approved, we would be looking at doing design review for those other lots. And then they would determine what they would like to do with the commercial zone, you know, entertaining or finding a commercial tenant to occupy that space. So you know, there's a lot of improvements that will need to occur prior to any construction that'll happen. So you're probably looking at 22, 23 realistically.
Guess that's, Mr. Mayor, that's kind of what I was thinking of is that this one will be pretty much in place before our expected new system will be constructed. So.
Yeah. As capacity problems. Counselor Pete Zoll.
Yeah, I have to say, this development probably affects me more than anyone else on this call because I live right down the street. I mean, I know the mayor does and future counselors do and Carl does too, but no more than it does me. In that, saying that, I mean, I approved it back in 15 years ago, and I approved it again at the two extensions that it went through. I am concerned about the transportation aspect of it as we were back then. Probably no surprise, right? Because that's what I brought up on that aspect of things. I do think there is a housing need for all housing needs and a part of that process. There was a time where we were talking about removing village commercial altogether. It has not panned out in other commercial or in village areas. And what would that mean? That has not been done or obviously had enough time from staff to bring that up. Or, you know, is it even one of the things that the council wants to even talk about as they did years ago? Because of the, how commercial has changed over the years. But in that, the design with, you know, 14 different and the capacity of that and what state law is doing to us, whether we like it or not. You know, we, you know, cannot, I guess, go against what the state law is requiring or is going to be requiring here in the next few months. Or where we have been in the past, and some of those have been like, for instance, annexation piece of things, right? State law changed that on us regardless of what our, our code was. And, and so that, as well as some of our density things as we brought up here, whether it's, you know, being able to have duplexes on all these lots, whether, when it was just a R1 zone in there in the past. I am really concerned about the road and about the density of the traffic on that road, right? Not only there, but all the way through down Debarco. And I don't care what you say it is. It is still a residential street. I face Debarco. I live on Debarco. My kids play in Debarco. And if you don't like it, come over and ride bikes with them in roller blade. And my wife just picked up another scooter and you can scoot around with them on Debarco. I run Debarco. Debarco is a local street because I live on it locally. No matter what the design of that matters. I understand that state law does not allow me to make decisions on that piece of it because they have their standards. But that hasn't changed the fact that the city can't implement some traffic calming abilities with on our roads. Wherever we feel we need to do that, like it has been on Debarco farther down. But that being said, that has nothing to do with this particular development in what we're looking at is for the zone change of it. That being said, I do believe that this is a transportation system plan that needs to be resolved and should have been resolved years ago. 15 years ago, we were hoping that this would have been resolved back then as part of the overall livability for the city. And when I talked about that, it also may have a negative effect on me where I live. But in what I see, but it is truly part of the system plan that we need to have as a city and that connectivity. Now, as Carl mentioned, we had talked about having a light at that. Now that's not up to us. That's up to ODOT in that. But the only way to do that is to have the development both on north and south as ODOT has explained to us when we went through this process. So as far as that goes, I agree with you, Carl. It annoys me to death when realtors tell people that nothing will be built on the other side of them. Right across the street, there was a forest. And when I moved in here, the realtors around me told the neighbors that no one will be built on where I built my house or literally across the street where Stan lives and I know Rich lives now, you know, and other people live as just around in that area too. That was a forest and, and all my neighbors are mad because someone tore down the forest and built houses there. And it's part of inside the city limits or in the urban growth boundary of that, it will eventually one day be developed. The bigger question is, is whether or not we change the the zoning of where the things are. And that piece of it, I do know that we do need additional housing. We are very short on those things and as we've heard many times. But is it going to change the 14 houses in there? I'll have to say, I know this is long-winded, so thank you for listening to me. I have been on the parks board with Kathleen and with several other people and some of the people that have commented. And we have looked at the multiple people that have looked at that property to bring it back over the course of many years about the adjoining park and what that brings. And those neighbors, that neighborhood who's been demanding and wanting that park, but the only thing that was bringing that park was the development of this piece of property. And making sure that that park fit and it was consistent between both sides of that new development park and existing Deer Point Park in there. So when this was approved originally, the Deer Point was there, but it had zero houses built in it. And so, I mean, I know we go back ways, but you know, Carl and I are old geezers and we've been at this for a while. So anyways, I may not like it, but I do think that this is part of what they have presented is much better than what they had presented before. And so sometimes that can be hard. I do appreciate staff and Shelley. Thank you so much for that video. That's the first one of your videos I ever saw. Thank you for the sequential ones from that. I think it was very helpful for the public and everybody else in understanding development and development code and what can be done on that. And so I highly recommend continuing with those and all other developments of it. So I may not like what it's going to bring to my life and where I live, but I have to kind of also look past that and what I'm deciding. So.
Thank you, counselor. I guess a couple of things that I would add to this conversation is this one is I'm getting pretty fed up and furious with approving different zone changes or having those talked about and proposed with a master plan comp plan for growth that has not been updated since, I think Shelley mentioned she was eight when that happened. And our very first goal setting two years ago, I pushed hard for that to be in the budget and was kind of spurred by both staff and fellow counselors that we didn't have room or, or, or time to get it in the priority list. I can cite another rant that I went on in our biannual at our second goal setting retreat where I asked everybody to raise their hand if they could tell me the last time it was updated. And somebody said, you know, 10 years ago. And it's like, no, no, not 10 years ago, 20, you know, 20 plus years ago, that was updated. You know, the reason you go through a process like that is so that you can bring in stakeholders, community members, and you can dream together and you can talk about the future of development and what it is going to look like. Because when you lack having a really strong updated plan, you end up with development proposals where, you know, they're putting together visions and they have the right to do that. I'm not trying to be disparaging in any way, but they have the right to develop proposals for you that then come in front of council where we're trying to guess what is best for our community with very little public input. With really the only input that we end up receiving is from people who are directly affected by the development, which I understand, I get it. And nobody wants to have a development in, in their backyard, especially if they were led to believe that it was going to look different. But the truth is, is that all these properties deserve to have more citizen input than just people who live in that area. We should be holistically and collectively talking about it as a community. And that's why, you know, I just heads up to council, I will be voting no on any budget, you know, that comes forward that does not include significant steps to an updated comp plan. It will be a strong priority in my next two years here. I think with a lot of the new counselors coming on board, I see allies, quite frankly, in that regard and pushing to get this thing done because I've pushed for it a lot of times and, and been spurred. And now we're sitting here with another development proposal in which we're going to have to make a decision. Now, traffic. You know, Debarco, you know, is, it's a bypass, you know, that was, and we don't like to hear that. It shouldn't be. It is horrific that it is. My kids are on their bikes as well. And I am jogging on Debarco as well. It is a dangerous, dangerous situation for our community. And I do worry that people will use it even more as an opportunity to bypass and to get through town, especially on those days that, that traffic becomes unattainable on 26. And then additionally, you know, wastewater, you know, we're, we're talking about public infrastructure. And that is a criteria from my understanding is making sure that we have adequate infrastructure in place when looking at these different zone changes and looking at these development proposals. And I have grave concerns about how we have set up with past decisions on public infrastructure. I'll tell you, I don't love the continued multifamily housing that's coming in so dramatically into this community. I, I'm like Counselor Lee, I like to have a breadth of different developments and I see a need for all, but I am seeing a lot of, of, you know, and we're seeing mass, both mass housing and mass, you know, high density multifamily developments coming into our community that I think that we need to be cautious of. Now, this is only 14 more units, and so that does set me back a bit to pause. Because, you know, the truth is, is that 14 additional units is not a dramatic increase in what we would be seeing there otherwise. And there will be some duplexes and stuff as we've talked about in this discussion that just coming from, you know, state, state laws, house bill rules that are being pushed on us. There's nothing we can do about that. But I'm having a hard time with this. I think you can probably sense that. And I'm frustrated to where we are as a council, and I'm even more frustrated knowing that even if successful on this comp plan and getting us to pay for it and get it kicked off, we're still two years from it. It's disgusting to me as somebody who grew up in this community and have kids that I'm raising here in a family. It's just disgusting. So anyways, I, I, I look forward to hearing more discussion on it. I'm, I'm very split on this. I am, I am probably, and I feel bad for, you know, the development proposal coming in front of us. But and good conscious in a lot of ways, I'm really struggling with, with approving this.
Can I, I don't know if I'm allowed to talk. Um, can I speak just a little bit to the comp plan update? So Kelly and I have started having conversations about what that's going to look like, you know, a kind of preliminary timeline. And we're looking at late 2021 to start doing a comp plan update. The good news is because I'm so recently out of planning school, I'm really excited to do a comp plan update. And I'm envisioning something a little more robust than what the 97 plan talks about. More than just kind of technocratic land use, but rather incorporating processes that create much more engagement for the public and much more engagement for citizens. And so I 100% hear you. I totally hear you and I completely agree. So I just wanted to, you know, put that on the record that we're initiating the conversations about a complaint update. Since I got hired on, now we have staff resources to do that. So I, I, I guess I just agree with you.
Thank you. Always appreciate those comments. Additional comments? Yeah. David?
If I could, yeah, I, I think maybe, you know, trending towards that time where you want to consider perhaps closing the hearing. But I would offer this, I think as many moving parts as there are to an application like this, the reality kind of gets back to that sort of fundamental issue with respect to the comp plan change and the criteria that relate to that. And the biggest one being, as we've talked about a bit, but I just want to kind of, you know, highlight it again for the council's benefit. But the change being proposed is the best means of meeting the identified public need. So it's even a little more specific than a public benefit, but a public need. And is what's being, being proposed the best means of meeting that? And so, you know, you've got, I think it's some comments were, were made earlier tonight. That is, you know, there's a bit of the eye of the beholder in this, right? It's, it's not as if, you know, you're dealing with a situation where you're looking at, this is only clear and objective criteria. You know, we, we went through that. This is, you know, a much sort of higher level. And so, you know, the council, as you're wrestling with, sort of looks at, okay, well, what are those identified needs? And is this the best way to meet that? Certainly you get, you know, some real goals ticked off with this. Debarco being one, maybe arguably the biggest one. You diversify and maybe arguably meet, you know, some housing needs that are there and maybe bring some downward pressure on prices and then the park as well. But there's something to be said also, you know, for the idea of, of, you do have a plan. It went through its own process. It's getting a little, a little long in the tooth perhaps, but it's there. And so, you know, there certainly isn't anything that would say that the council needs to, you know, jump and do something like this. It's certainly justified to say, well, notwithstanding those, you know, benefits, there might be other ways that would be, you know, we'd be able to meet those needs. And so I guess, you know, I wouldn't call it unbridled discretion by any means, but legally speaking, you do have the ability to look at that. And I think there is a significant amount of, of discussion and debate that both sides could have on this, that whether this application meets that need or not.
Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor Pulliam. May I just do two things, please, in the nature of, one is substantive and one is procedural. So I just texted Ray to ask him what he can tell us about our application in terms of what it says about wastewater. And I appreciate your questions. It's, it's a fair question. We had not been asked that before tonight. I guess that's why you're mayor. And I appreciate your questions. It's, it's a fair question. We had not been asked that before tonight. I guess that's why you're mayor. So if Ray, if you have any information, mayor, maybe the mayor would entertain it. And secondly, forgive me, I just need to ask this. And I think Jeremy's, I'm not going to try and pronounce your last name. I don't want to screw it up again. I think Jeremy's already answered this, but mayor, if you would please, there's a series of cases out there that say if you live near a site, you need to say whether you have a conflict of interest in living there. And I'm hearing, I heard the council president say that he did not. He could decide this based on the approval criteria, even though he lives on Debarco. And so mayor, in all due respect, I'd ask you just to say the same thing if you would please.
Absolutely.
Thank you for letting me raise this.
Absolutely. I, I, I can definitely be impartial. As, as I live in Sandy and am the mayor of the entire community of Sandy and don't live directly on Debarco especially.
Thank you. That's all I had, mayor. Thank you.
And I'll state for the record, I can, I can comment on this impartially. As I think you might have alluded to my back and forth and still have not decided, but still impartially on that. And you may want to get Carl to do the same thing as he lives next door.
Who doesn't live on Debarco?
Well, that's part of the point.
I don't live on Debarco, but I do live on Langen Sand, which is loads that are impacted there. And so.
And again, you know, just to not to belabor this, I understand why Mike's bringing that up. But, you know, ultimately, the question you'd have to ask yourselves and, you know, the mayor's answered it, Jeremy's answered it. You know, do you feel that notwithstanding all that, that you, you can't sort of look at this and just objectively kind of review what's been, but what's been, what's been applied for based on the criteria? And so, you know, if you feel you can't, that's a different story. That would be a matter of you being, you know, biased and you shouldn't be participating. But the very high bar, and so I, you know, just want to make sure the council understands that as well.
Thank you, David. Mayor, the last thing I'll say, and then I'll mute myself again. I, I haven't heard from, from Ray. The only thing I would say with respect to wastewater is when you're doing a comprehensive plan and zoning map amendment as we are, that's one of the approval criteria, you're exactly right, goal 11. But sure plan policies, we don't have any negative comments in the record. I think Kelly or maybe Shelley said that. So, and it would be unusual to me that DEQ would review this at this stage. I think, I think Kelly tried, it's reviewed later. But we would certainly be comfortable with the condition requiring status, requiring determination that there's adequate capacity. And the good news is we have to go through design review for the, for the non-single-family homes. And that'll give you another opportunity to review for adequate capacity. So that's all I have to say about that issue. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
Right. For the record, Ray Moore, all county surveyors, I'll just kind of reiterate. Mike Walker and the city engineer son, they reviewed it. There's no concerns in their letters about capacity of the treatment plan. I understand it's, we're in the process, the city of Sandy is in the process of redesigning and expanding it. They did speak to, you know, the size of the sewer mains to be extended to the site, which we proposed. And sort of the process, how that works is we do the, you know, after we get these lines planning, we do the final engineering for the sewer plans. These plans get reviewed by the city engineer and also essentially by the state, DEQ. So that, that review process does come later. So that's all I had unless somebody else had some questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you know other questions? Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I had one. I just want to clarify, I asked this earlier, but just want to make sure. Left-hand turns off a Debarco headed west will be allowed. Okay, I'm sorry. There was just this confusion part where I kept on hearing right turn in, right turn out. And so I just wanted to make sure that that is still part of being able to the transportation is being able to turn left off a Debarco headed west.
Mr. Orange's testimony was yes.
Yes. Yeah, the left turns will be allowed.
It'll be a full access intersection.
Close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
We have a motion from Counselor Hamlin and a second from Counselor Pete Sold to close the public hearing. All those counselors in favor, please signify by saying aye or provide me a thumbs up. Oppose, say nay or a thumbs down. Motion passes. We have closed the public hearing. Thank you to everybody for your participation in our Q and A and the presentations. With that.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and transfer the representatives from the applicant over to the attendees.
Wonderful. Thank you. So with that, we are now open for further council discussion or motions.
Just as a comment, I guess I'm really having a hard time finding a reason to say no to this one. The criteria that's come up again and again seems to be pretty well thought through. There's been certainly some issues that I think that are really concerning to me. We've already talked about them in that item. So I'm not sure I want to go back through them. But certainly in terms of the criteria, I don't see anything that would stop me from saying yes to this thing. There's been a few things that maybe are gray in my mind. The, this 17.54 discussion about having a village to plan. I don't know. That's something that we want to fulfill or maybe just discard as part of any future comp plan discussion. But those are the kind of things that I don't see are really going to be impactful to decision here. So the transportation system aside, I, I don't know that there's much that we can do here. All 14 additional units compared to what it would normally be. And again, it's not just 14 units. It's the whole 148 that are going to be built with this process. That will be the cumulative effect on Debarco and 26 to 11, all the different impacts for people as well as cars. So it will be an impact and we will be experiencing it before our, our water system gets put into place. And probably long before ODOT will help us in any way with a sign or excuse me, signal or any other things that might help us to get through this process. So I see issues on all of our road systems.
Lights are flickering.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we better speak fast because both Stan and I will lose electricity.
Actually, my lights, my lights are flickering also and I'm over by the
What does a motion need to look like, David?
I want to ask a question, a clarifying question with David, though. And it was back to what we talked about before, that come the state law has changed to say that all these what is it, the R1 density could end up having, or single-family lots could end up having duplexes. Not to say that's what's being proposed, but regardless of the fact if we want that or not. If we make the zone change and that goes to R3, we're only going to have that 14 difference. But then that, those other ones would be under that other designation. Is that correct?
So you'll have to forgive me because I don't know exactly in the exact details of what they're proposing. You know, how many, it doesn't sound like they're proposing too many single-family homes. It might even be a total of, you know, 10 or seven and Shelley or Kelly can, 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 you know, correct me if I'm wrong. But with respect to 2001, what it says is basically, as far as zoning goes, anywhere the city allows for a single-family home as of right, you have to allow, in Sandy's case, you have to allow for a duplex. Sandy would add to allow for a duplex. Any place that, you know, with really with respect to R2, R3, the zoning already allows for a lot more density than that anyway. So, you know, none of that would really be affected by 2001, practically speaking. I think it would be those, those R1 lots that I suppose you could look at and say, yeah, those might be double the density that they are, 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 you know, identified as. But again, we're, I'm not sure how many of those are. I think it's seven and 10 at the most.
It's only four lots.
Only four lots in this case.
Oh, you'd be, you'd be eight in that case, that you could have eight, potentially eight dwelling units under 2001.
The one thing to keep in mind is our current R1 zoning already allows duplexes as an outright permitted use. The big difference will be is that the current zoning code says you have to have four parking, off-street parking space, spaces per duplex. State law is going to prohibit that. So we won't be able to require any more off-street parking spaces than a single-family home is required to have. So smaller lots that currently have a single-family home will easily accommodate a duplex because the parking requirements are the same regardless of it's a single-family home or a duplex. So I think that's the main difference that you would see if a lot of this remained as R1 and potentially some of those houses converted to duplexes, is that under the existing code, they could anyways. But we would require double the amount of off-street parking than what it will look like once Houseball 2001's passed.
Counselor Smallwood, did you have something?
I do. So then what do we need to do to widen the streets when these residential areas go in? Because they're getting incredibly difficult to drive large apparatus down with the amount of street parking in the narrow roads.
That will be a great thing to bring up in the TSP revision. That's the time we'd be able to modify the street widths. But just to point out, Houseball 2001 also says we can't require any more on-street parking than we would require for a single-family development.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, is there, is there a motion? David, what does the motion need to be?
Well, you've got an ordinance in front of you one way or the other. So, you know, depending on whether the council feels that the, you know, criteria have been met, it would be, you know, I think it's, I think there was a proposal. I want to, just to give you some guidance in the staff report. But basically it would be whether you approve the motion, I mean, excuse me, approve the ordinance. Or whether you would deny the application. I mean, you really wouldn't have to have a motion to not approve the ordinance, but it would be more of a motion of denial.
So just, just so you know, I'm looking at the suggested motion here. So without any hesitation, I'd move to approve the first reading of ordinance. We have to ask for reading, right, before we do the motion?
Yeah, you would read it by title. Yeah, you'd call for a reading by title only. That's correct. And then you'd have a motion to adopt the first reading. If that were, that would be how you'd go to approve it.
So Jeff, why don't we go ahead and call for the first reading?
Okay. This is ordinance 2020-25. An ordinance approving a zone map amendment, comprehensive plan map amendment, a specific area plan and a tentative subdivision plan and imposing conditions of approval.
Make a motion to approve the first reading.
And I'll second.
There's a motion to approve the first reading and by Counselor Hamlin, a second by Counselor Exner. Jeff, I'll call for a roll call vote on this, please.
Counselor Pete Sold?
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood?
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Exner?
Yes.
Mayor Pulliam?
No. Motion carries?
Yes.
Okay. You have to be unanimous for a second reading, is my understanding.
That's correct. So next, at the next council meeting, you could have the second reading.
Okay. With that, that's as far as we can go this evening. So, so what's the proper deal to close out this meeting, David? Because we've done the first reading, I guess we've, we've closed the public, we just adjourned the meeting for tonight. And then it'll be our second reading at our next meeting, correct?
Correct. It would just be on the regular agenda, the second reading, no additional hearing. It's, it's ministerial at this point, just to have the second reading.
All right. Thank you so much for that. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn for this evening before our power goes out. Thank you, everybody, for your time. And thank you for the members of the public for joining us this evening and actively engaging in this process. Thank you for staff, for all of your work that you've put into this. And, and also thank you to the applicants for a good Q and A and, and proposal. With that, we will see you all at our next meeting. Thank you. And thank you to Counselor Pete Sold for humoring me this evening from, from your house. Appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.